Our call to order. The February 5th, 2019 Lake Mills City Council meeting. Roll call, please. Mr. Fields?
Here.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Here.
Mr. Fritsch?
Here.
Ms. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Buckholz?
Here.
And Mr. Foster previously informed staff that he be unavailable this evening. Okay. Would everyone please stand for the pledge of leave, Johnson?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number four, correction and/or approval of the city council minutes of January 15th, 2019.
I move approval of the January 15th council minutes.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion, additions or corrections? Seeing none, call the roll. Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passed 4-0. Okay. Number five, correspondence. Does anyone on the council have correspondence they wish to share with the council? I do want to just thank Mother Nature and the Main Street program for the nice knicker po- blocker activities over the weekend. We certainly lucked out on that one. It could have been 25 below zero, but, and I'll talk to people in town and they had a good time with the different activities and so just wanted to compliment the Main Street people for that. Item number six, questions and public comment. The public is encouraged to address the council at this time regarding items on the agenda. If your comments pertain to a public hearing, you are asked to hold your comments until the hearing. Public comment may also be made at this time on items that are not on the agenda if you have registered with the city clerk before the meeting has been called to order. The state's open meeting law discourages action by the council on items not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes and state your name and address when starting your comments and fill out the sign-in sheet provided on the podium. Do we have anyone who would like to speak from the public? I see some people who are here to speak on agenda items, which we can do at that time. And other than that, we'll close public hearing. City managers' report. Steve?
I've provided you with a copy of the chief's memo on the K-9. I think that Vicki is going to request that that become an agenda item and so we'll have the motion and stuff prepared for the next council meeting. I will not be at the 19th council meeting. I will be flying in from Phoenix. Yeah, I'll feel sorry for you, but I'm sure Betsy can handle it adequately. She'll enjoy it. She likes playing me. We did meet with the medical director from Aurora and have set up some conditions to work under and they are going to send us an MOU to see if we're in agreement with that. We have done some more advertising on the paid-on premises program, trying to see if we can get that a little bit more active. We are in the process of ordering the new equipment for the EOCs. It's been a long time and the radios and everything need to be brought up to date because there are a lot of changes that have occurred since those were in place. We are adding one so that we'll have three emergency operation centers in the city, one in the fire department, one in city hall, and one in the light and water building. Talked about the K-9 union negotiations aren't tonight, South Main Street. The public improvements will be constructed in 2019 and everybody to start gearing up for that. It will start. The request from the contractor is to start the first week in March, so about four or five weeks away. I don't know that they'll actually be able to do that, but it's coming up really fast either way. There is a public information meeting scheduled for 5:30 February 12th in the community center in the municipal building. There is a pre-construction meeting scheduled for February 14th. That's at, that'll be at DOT. The contractor is La Lande Construction and they've provided a timeline which says it wants to start in March. The main project being they want to start the water and sewer at Water Street and start heading south. Brian Kane is the communications liaison for the city on that project. A lot of people might know him from the lead service lateral inspection program. He'll continue to work on this project for us. There are four phases. Phase one starts at Water Street and heads north to Madison Street and that's not quite as intense a project as the other parts will be because it only has water and sewer connections and doesn't have the water and sewer main replacement because if you remember, some Prairie Sand and Gravel a couple of years ago installed the sanitary sewer on North Main Street there and there's a pretty good sized relative, new, new for us water main in the park. That's 10 inches. It was built in the 60s, probably under normal conditions. It's at the end of its life and should be replaced, but in Lake Mills is probably pretty There will be pavement replaced, storm sewer, water and sewer laterals, curb and gutter sidewalk, and because it's in the downtown area and involves a lot of businesses, that'll make, that'll be what the complication is along with parking and access to those businesses. Phase two runs from Water Street southeast, Lake Park Place, and that's full reconstruction including water and sewer. And like I said, that probably is what they're going to start on first because that sanitary sewer is pretty complicated in that region. Phase three runs from east Lake Park Place, south to Woodland Beach Road. And in the original project timeline, that would be where we would cut it off for the winter and then come back and finish phase four in 2020. They're shooting to get it done in this fiscal year, which we hope they do. They might have some, we believe they may have some minor finish-up stuff in 2020 like grading and seeding and some repairs and fix-ups to problems or mistakes and it should be substantially done in the first year, we're hoping. But if we have weather like we had last year where it rains every other day for all summer long, it may take more than two years. And phase four runs from Woodland Beach Road to the end of the project. Demolition of the Crump and Mills elevator and the Fargo Creamery Supply Company warehouse will be, probably begin right away in late April, early May. So do you all know where that's at?
No.
Well, the White Barn on the south side of the bike trail is the Fargo Creamery Supply Warehouse. And the building on the north side, which is what we own, which is 1204 South Main, portion of that was the Crump and Mills elevator. South Main Street has been awarded McGuire Construction out of Monroe.
Mulberry.
Yeah, Mulberry. Is that what I said?
Yep, you said South Main. That's right.
We don't have any information on the public information meeting or the pre-construction meeting yet, but we'll probably be getting those shortly. Construction is likely to start in early May. And that project is in two phases. First phase will start at Fargo and head north to Grant and then they'll come back down to Madison and complete up to Fargo. And that's a full reconstruction, all water, sewer, streets, curb, gutter, storm, sidewalks. We have been in contact, I don't know if anybody remembers, but last year, one of the only places in the heavy rains that we had that flooded was County Highway V up near the old Plinar Building. And that was unusual. Normally we have a lot of other areas that flood, not that area. Came to our attention that that ditch had pretty much silted full and we met this week with the DNR to get permission to clean that ditch and we should be able to start doing that in a couple of weeks. We also met with them about the cedars. We've been told by the DNR that we have to do a dam inspection. So as you remember, we're under the condition where every two years we have to inspect a We got our LSL reporting in, lead service laterals, and we're getting very close to being done. We're down to less than 300. A lot of those are in the trailer parks, which I'm sure aren't lead. They're probably plastic. But we still have to go in and check them. Radium, we got our first round of testing back. It was really good. Our second round, we've been informed that it was much closer to the total daily maximum limit and so we're a little bit worried about our third round, but we'll see how that goes. AMI meters are going in. We're in full-blown experiment on the corrosion control, so we're running our samples and getting them tested to see how our experiment on the samples goes. The water tower contract is going out for bids. Tonight we have on the agenda the final plat for Riverwood, actually I shouldn't say that, is the final plat for phase six, which is about 20, 25 lots. And the construction plans were included, but the construction plans also include like American Way south of the park, a sanitary sewer service to a property in the industrial park, and then the street extensions in the industrial park. So it could be a little bit confusing, but it's definitely in there if you looked at the, construction plans for that phase are in there. We did have conversations this week with representatives from Brookstone to make sure that we're moving forward with that. Other than that, I'm done. You have anything you want to ask about?
I just want to reiterate, next Tuesday night at 5:30 downstairs in this building is the meeting with DOT?
Yes, with DOT we'll run the meeting.
About South Main?
Yes.
So anybody who wants to come, whether you have, it's open to the public, right?
Yes.
It isn't only for the residents that are affected, but it's intended for the residents?
It's going to be geared mainly to the businesses in downtown.
Oh, okay.
But yes, anybody can attend and ask any questions because all the primary DOT representatives will be there and they know the project as well as anybody. So if you have a question, you can stop in there. It's open to the public.
Okay, so. And there will not be a public works board meeting that night?
That's right.
Because most of them will be attending the other meeting.
And it was at the same time. So staff had to make a decision on which one they were going to.
Ah, okay. So, all right. Anybody else have questions about Steve's report? All right, let's move on then. Acceptance of minutes of the park board for September 18th, 2018 will be, they've been received and will be placed on file. And item number nine, council business. We have two tavern operators licenses. Would you read those names, please?
Emmy Vogeli and Jolynn Kritz.
Okay. Do we have a motion to issue those?
I move that we grant tavern operators licenses to the two applicants.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll? Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passed 4-0. Okay. 9B, discussion of Jefferson County natural hazards mitigation plan for 2019 to 2023. And who will be our, is that Steve or, yep, okay. Steve, it's all yours.
Okay, so we approved the first one about 2008, maybe earlier than that. We participated in that and the council approved it and set it and made a motion to set it aside as approved by the city and that we would participate. They've just updated it some with some additional new information that's come up because we've had a lot more weather-related events. The original one was kind of, you know, terrorist-oriented. This one is much more weather-related. And it gives a lot of good ideas on how to act. It does use incident command, does talk about how staff has to be involved. Steve, you know what we've been going through.
I am.
So, and it talks, you know, the question is, do we have enough people to meet the requirements that are put here, but really it combines us as a county, gives us the resources of county. We also have the resources of the state if we need to continue further. And so we, we have a pretty good relationship with those people. So I feel comfortable in moving forward with this. At this point, what they want is us to authorize this letter to be sent in on the timeline. So if you're good with that, I'm going to send that, sign it, and send it in. It actually has then where we have to go through it and then pass a resolution that says that we're going to attempt to be in full compliance with the plan. But at this point, they're just asking us to say, yes, we've read it and we understand it.
So that letter would have your name in it?
Yeah, could have mine, could have yours. I'm not going to get too excited about this.
I'm real happy to have you have it be your name, since you're the one who would be knowing what's going on. I, I won't claim to have that one under my belt.
Do you have any kind of idea of costs that would be associated to comply with this then? Because I saw on here their one-line item was they recommend us building a new shelter, expanding a shelter down at Sandy Beach.
Yes.
There's some, there's some items in here that apply to Lake Mills?
Yes. That was probably the most significant one, but if you look at our Sandy Beach plan, that's incorporated in there. So yes, we've, we do have an idea what it's going to cost. We have incorporated it into our Sandy Beach plan.
I didn't know if there was a timeline that you had to comply with this, if it would try and push.
Not really. It had the same thing in the original.
Kind of open-ended then?
Yeah, it's just that you try and work towards it.
Okay.
A shelter like Corf Park?
No, a tornado shelter.
Yeah.
Oh.
State law now requires that you have tornado shelters in trailer parks. And if you don't, you have to designate a location. We've always designated a location, but it's not always the easiest to access, especially from the trailer park. So we looked at it from the standpoint of one of the key issues in the trailer park was getting a tornado shelter. We have a small bathroom laundry mat type facility down there and we would just take that location and expand it into the, so that's been incorporated into that Sandy Beach plan. So if you look, you'll see it in there. But it doesn't say that we have to do it like in the next year.
Yeah, that was just my biggest concern, if we had to try and accelerate things.
Not what we want to do.
No.
So do we need a motion? Have you signed this letter or?
Comfortable with making a motion? It's on the agenda, right? Yeah, I think so.
Because it just says a discussion on the agenda.
All right, well then, I'm going to send it in.
Okay, so nobody's upset about you doing that, so we're, we're okay. All right, we'll just consider that a normal part of your job. There you go. Okay. Anybody else have questions on that item? Okay, seeing none. Moving on to item C, discussion decision on the request from the Lake Mills High School, Lake Mills music parents to use the community center for a Roaring Twenties fundraising event. Okay, we do have a motion. Would you read the motion, please?
City council motion 19-2-1-1, authorizing the use of Lake Mills Community Center by the Lake Mills Area School District and Lake Mills music parents.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
I move approval of motion 19-2-1-1.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, now we can discuss it. I just wanted to clarify because in the application, it says that at some point students will be gone and just adults will be at this activity and then at that point there will be alcohol at it? That's what I saw in the application. Does anybody?
I, I know that I was told the same thing as part of the application for the picnic license. That's not, the agenda item though is just for the fundraiser portion, which the policy for the community center requires the council approval. So it's for the fundraiser, it's not for a liquor license.
Right. I just wondered though, because it says that, you know, there will be, in other words, that's a normal procedure.
Under the terms of the liquor license, you have to have a responsible beverage server on-site anyway, so whether or not minors are on-site wouldn't necessarily matter. They'd still be under 21 and ineligible for service.
Got it. And not an issue for us? Okay.
Not, not, I don't know for us. You know, the police department may want to make a check, but.
Okay. Anybody have questions, comments about this motion? Seeing none, call the roll, please. Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed 4-0. And I don't think we mentioned it in our, in our discussion, but I was just going to mention, the event is on April 6th, 2019, from 1 to 12 here, and that's why we're voting on it, so. Okay, it passed. Moving on, get back to my agenda. So, discussion on item and possible, yeah, discussion and decision on the ratification of the WPPA police union contract. Steve, are you, well, we have a motion. Would you read the motion, please?
City council motion 19-2-1-2, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement between the city of Lake Mills and the Wisconsin Professional Police Association.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve that motion?
So move.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the table. Discussion, Steve, you want to speak to that?
Yeah, it's pretty limited, yeah. It allows, and I gave you a copy of the highlighted change one. The real financial issues are, we provided some more money for uniform allowance and we gave them a 2% increase rather than one and a half with a half percent bonus at the end of the year. So from a financial payout in the year, it doesn't really change the numbers. What it does is the accumulation of the numbers over a period of years. So I went through and did the calculations and it was like $6,000 difference between what I had budgeted and what they requested, so we authorized that. It's a little bit different. They don't get the bonus at the end of the year. And, but, you know, so you get a one and a half with a bonus, the next year you start out at that one and a half percent, whereas they start out at the 2%. So that gives that slight accumulation over the course of the three years, but it's not significant.
Sound okay?
What we're looking for is in, in 2022, tid number six comes off and then we have some more financial flexibility. We won't get all of it, but we'll get about 50% of it.
Well, that would a little bit help, that's for sure, so. Okay, so, anybody else have discussion questions on the contract before we vote?
Yeah, the other question I've got is I notice fair share gets dropped.
Yeah, that was a court decision. Supreme Court made a decision that you can't have fair share anymore, so we, everybody had to go through and do the cleanup with contract to say that fair share wasn't a part of the agreement anymore.
Is that at all connected with Title 10?
No.
No, not Title 10. This was a federal.
This was a federal. This was Supreme Court. This was a Supreme Court decision. And it broke along four to five.
Uh huh. Okay.
And it did reverse a historical court decision.
Thanks for explaining. Any other discussion questions before we vote? Call the roll. Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed 4-0. Okay. Thank you for your work and thank you for helping us get this done, so. All right, resolution 19-6, final plat, Brookstone Meadows, phase six. Let's get to that one on my agenda. There we go. Would you read the resolution, please?
Resolution 19-06, final plat approval, Brookstone Meadows subdivision, phase six.
Okay. And by the, before we do the motion, this did go to the public works board and we do have a copy of their motion on this on, in front of us as well. So do we have a motion from the council? For final plat approval?
It also went to the planning commission.
What did I say? Oh, I said public works board. I meant planning commission.
It went to the public works board too, but it went to the planning commission.
Oh, okay. I was thinking planning commission and said public works board. Okay, so thank you for correcting.
I move approval of resolution 19-06.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Discussion. Steve, are you speaking on this one?
Sure. The final plat is the, when we did the preliminary plat, we did phases six through 10. This is only phase six, so it involves construction of about 22, 25 of the 73 lots that are in that portion of the subdivision. The construction plans are attached. We signed an agreement with Brookstone that we would construct it and special assess them. So that'll be part of the project this year. They have five years to pay their special assessment. They have an agreement worked out with Loose Homes to build homes on the plats as they finish out.
What company?
Loose Homes.
Oh, Loose Homes.
So I anticipate that, that they'll build out pretty quick. Jefferson County is substantially short on new, on housing. The demand far exceeds the market, so I anticipate that these houses will move pretty quick, at least in the next year. We'll see what kind of market corrections happen after that. But this year just commits us to this 20-lot section. Which if you remember, Loose Homes, which was Corey O'Donnell, they did the Crestview plat. They've already got all eight of the lots ready to move there. They're begging for more.
This is phase six. What will the next phase be?
It'll be seven.
Okay.
And it'll, this phase was cherry picked because when I say that, the infrastructure was already substantially installed. And. And, um, as we continue, now we have to more or less follow American Way east. And then, so you'll see a lot of L-shaped with each road. You'll see American Block, about three, four hundred feet of American Way, and then a street running up north, and then connecting into the next street out. And I'll continue to do that for the final four phases.
Okay. So, everything's pretty eyes dotted, cheese crossed?
In this, yes. I would, the American Way south of the park is a little bit more difficult. Uh, but that's not, we were trying to bid them as one. The, um, but the subdivision portion is. That's all designed. It's ready to go. Shouldn't be any problem.
So we'll be seeing the other one? The southern?
Uh, you approved that quite a while ago and
But there's still more.
Public Works Board, and the construction plans are included in here. Uh, but, um, yeah, you'll see the bid. So we'll make a determination on whether we're going to award the bids. It, the construction plans, like I said, they include four separate projects that we kind of lumped together to try and get a bigger project. Because the bigger the project, generally the better the bid. And so we, we lumped Phase Six, American Way, south of the park, CP Avenue, south of the well, and then a sanitary sewer extension, two of the lot that Dog and Shrub purchased, just south of the old Astalin Engineering Building across the street from As, Astalin Engineering.
Oh, yeah, okay. So you were able to put those together for a good bid?
We hope.
I'm an optimist.
And we're hoping that one of the contractors that bid on the other two projects in town kind of jumps on this. They're kind of spaced in that order.
Okay. We'll see if it comes out that way. Any other questions on this item? Seeing none. Call the roll. Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero. Okay, thank you. All right, we're to the third reading of Ordinance eleven ninety-nine A. Would you read the title for that, please?
Ordinance eleven ninety-nine A, Amending Solid Waste Collection and Disposal Regulations.
Okay, and we got all the house cleaning done on that one and, uh, all the, all the stuff we looked at last time and so forth. It's all cleaned up and ready to go. So, do we have a motion to approve Ordinance eleven ninety-nine A?
I'll move to approve, uh, Ordinance eleven ninety-nine A.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion before we vote? I think we pretty well took this one to task. So... Call the roll. Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero. Okay, thank you, and thank you for the work on staff on getting it where we needed it to be. Ordinance twelve oh one, would you, um, read the title for that?
Ordinance twelve oh one, amending Section six sixty dash forty-four, official zoning map, City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin, parcel two four six zero seven one four eighteen forty-three zero zero one, Brookstone Meadows.
Okay. Okay, this is our first reading. Any, Steve, you want to say something about this one, or who, who's in charge of this?
I, I've got it. It's, um, a rezoning of a parcel. Looks like two parcels, but it's actually one. Kind of a unique situation that we don't see very often, but when they subdivided out that one portion of the, of Phase Five, they split that parcel in half and the county left those two parcels with one parcel number. But it didn't get zoned. It got separated out somehow and didn't get zoned. So all the rest of the subdivision was appropriately zoned. This one we have to correct. So there two lots that make up one parcel that we're rezoning from RD to, um, single-family R four, which is consistent with the housing development that we're doing there.
Now...
So in other words, we're just extending the present surrounding zoning into that parcel I've kept forgotten about?
Yes, that's exactly what's happening. It's, it's, uh, when you look at it, you can see the single-family lots. You can see that all the single-family lots around it, and then these are just, but they were, they were actually part of the original plat. And, uh, were intended to be single-family. Uh, we changed the actual type of zoning since then. We, some of that was R one and some of that was R two. And now we, now we have like R one four and R one six and R one eight. And that's the number of units per acre. This is R one four, which is consistent with the R one that we used to have. Uh, so it, that's exactly what was intended and, and planned in that area. Uh, we do not have any current plans to include that in the plat. Um, at some point we may, if we get some pressure to continue, push forward with it. Problem with it is, is that uh, there's a street here, and then there's a drainage ditch, and then there's that twelve-acre parcel that's south of the park, which at this time they haven't made any decision on how they want to develop that. So we may sit and wait and see how that falls out before we make any decisions on this, on that lot, but everything to the, to the, this direction and north will be finalized all the way out to Harvey Road. And that's already all zoned appropriately.
So we'll see that other parcel again later? The one on the left?
You may see that as a development. Um, you, um, not as a zoning, but as a, a plat. But I, I'm not going to guarantee that. That's that's a, that's a location that becomes difficult at this current time, but if he does go with a, uh, the type of development that he had originally been proposing on the, the lot south of, of the park, uh, you could see that develop.
And this has gone through Planning Commission? So we're fine there? And we just, is there any rush on this moving?
No, no, we've got time. We got the bids out. We'll get the bids back. Construction will start, so housing will actually be done. So you have time. You could do the first reading and
We'll just do it tonight and move it to second reading at the next meeting. Okay, anybody else have comments or questions? All right, then we'll do that. We'll see it on our next agenda. Ordinance twelve oh two, amending placement of stop signs, first reading. Would you read the that for us?
Do you want the title or the full ordinance?
Um, I just read the title. I'm sorry about that. Uh, hold on, let me get to it here and let me see what we, oh, why don't you read it?
Ordinance twelve oh two, amending placement of stop signs. The city council, the City of Lake Mills, Jefferson County, Wisconsin, does it as follows. Section one, City of Lake Mills, ordinance six fifteen dash ten, stop signs placement is hereby amended by adding the following. A stop sign shall be erected in place of the north into the alley identified as a part of Lot One, CSM five six nine four three two zero nine zero, recorded as document one three six seven zero three five, connecting West Lake Street and Campus Street, the intersection of the alley with Campus Street. Section two, the stop sign should be placed on a pole at the northeast corner of the alley and extending into the intersection facing south and controlling traffic headed north through the alley to Campus Street. Section three, this ordinance is sponsored by council member Vicki Schmidt. Section four, all ordinances or parts of ordinances inconsistent with or contributing the provisions of this ordinance are hereby repealed. Section five, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage and publication as provided by law.
Okay. Vicki, do you want to say anything about it, since you?
The stop sign is supposed to, um, add to the safety in the area of the, the school stu, or the
Dance Studio.
Dance Studio. Over by campus and along the alley.
Right, and we had, uh, a nice description by Steve in our packet, which I thought, thank you for doing that. Pretty detailed.
So a question I've got is, this problem's been going on, ongoing now for a while. We're still having problems?
The, uh, the memo was provided to three D and they kind of complied with it. So a lot of the issues were reduced. There's still some problems with the stop sign at the top, which we, was our portion of the project. And we've just been kind of busy and so it didn't get to the top of our list, but, uh,
This is the stop sign will be right on campus as you're going out of the alley and
Yes, yeah. And it, it, there was a lot of discussion on how to install the stop sign. Because it's at that point where it's a blind corner. And, um, so it's, do you install it onto the building? Do you put the pole out into the alley, which is already narrow enough and you have enough trucks pulling that corner that you know, when people try and drive under it, is, are they going to run into the stop sign? Is it going to hit their car or something like that? Most cars would not. The bottom of the stop sign is supposed to be seven feet tall. But, you know, there might be a van or a truck that comes out and hits it. Uh, we decided to set up a pole that was actually behind the corner of the building and then had a U on it. And so if they hit it, they just hit the sign. They'd take the whole pole off and that the pole would be protected by the, the building. And, uh, so we finally decided how we wanted to do it. And then we, you know, just had to get it through all the staff and write something up and see if there was anything else we wanted to add. So we, we've got to that point now where we're comfortable with the process. Um, and I don't, I don't know who in their right mind would pull out of that alley without stopping, but apparently it happens.
Well, there's always somebody that'll try to do something that doesn't make any sense. So... This is first reading. Is there any rush on this one?
No, I think the ground's cold enough. We can wait a couple more weeks.
Okay, so we'll move to second reading, next meeting. Thank you for the, um, memo. All right, that takes us to recommendations for future agendas. I think we have to discuss what to do with our canceled meeting from last week. Thoughts on that item?
I was thinking that, uh, after the DOT meeting, we could have a, the meeting here.
A work session?
Public Works Board wasn't here. Yeah, we can do that work session right then.
What time does the DOT meeting run to?
Seven thirty, but it actually only from five thirty to six thirty is a presentation. Then after that, it's kind of letting people stop and ask questions.
So what time would you want to start the, uh?
That's up to you, but it, the sooner the better. I'm not, I'm staying out all night anymore.
Seven?
Is that next week, Tuesday?
Yes.
I'll be out of town Tuesday, next week. I know on short notice you have a hard time getting everybody together anyways.
Now, that's our branding meeting?
Yes.
Is our branding meeting becoming a little more concise just by the nature of the beast?
Well,
Or is it still?
You know, the conversations we'd had up to that point, I tried to narrow it down and make it as quick as possible, so I would say that, yeah, you're probably going to have a much more concise meeting than you probably saw in the past. They're, they're actually going to have samples, probably five, six, maybe seven. You can thin them out or change them, send them out. And I would suggest that you pick the one or two that you'd like or that you want to see. If you decide you want to modify something, we'll come back. We'll have another meeting. Once we got something we're kind of comfortable with, we can send it out to a public information meeting, see what comes out of that, and then bring it back and, and, uh, see if we can finalize it.
So if Steve can't make it, we could go ahead and do some of it and then show him what we're doing and if you don't, you know, if you go, oh my God, that's awful, then we'll redo another meeting. But if you say, yeah, that sounds okay, then we accomplish that then.
Yep, that'd be fine.
Okay, and, uh, we're also, um, by doing it a little bit the way we're looking at doing it, we're going to save some money doing it, too. And also, you mentioned the water tower in your report. You were going to get back to us about the colors.
Um, they pretty much allow any color. They recommend blues and greens. Um, but what, what we did was is we put the contract out with a three-color mix. So whatever colors we pick are going to, unless you get really crazy and start putting in like fifteen colors.
We're not going to be really crazy.
Fluorescent.
I want to note that, that, um, you can check all the cities in Jefferson County. They pretty much all have their brand. And Evansville just did a big one, so if, they had a big article in the newspaper here recently about their branding process and the selection that they went with and how they're using it. So if you want to get a feel for, you know, what's going on. I also talked, um, about the school district one and so we can kind of look at what we got there.
Okay, well then, next Tuesday night, seven o'clock in this room. The other meeting is downstairs.
Yes.
So that we won't be conflicting.
Well, they'll be done, but, uh, pretty much, I mean, they start at five thirty and they end at seven thirty, but the main part of the meeting is from five thirty to six thirty.
But they might have people that are still asking questions. We can come up here and start our meeting.
Yeah, we'll be pretty much, anything that we have will pretty much be done. We can leave Duane down there.
Okay, I think that sounds like a good idea. So, all right?
Yep.
Any other items for future agendas?
I'd like to place an item on the next agenda for the council to discuss the K nine program that's being proposed by the police department and to discuss the possibility of approving the program and accepting the donations.
Those are two separate items, is? Yeah, all right.
Uh, I would also like a more detailed cost analysis, especially after the donation. What it would cost us to run it after donations, run out, how it will affect the budget. And I'd also like to put on, uh, a resolution of appreciation for the donation to the library.
We have. You have Gerard write that up for me, or?
I think Gerard can do that. We can ask him, can't we?
Yeah, I think, you know, it'd be appropriate for him to write it up. He, he really didn't clue me into a lot of what was going on.
Actually, there were two, I believe.
There are two, but the one he was talking about was, was the fifty thousand dollar one that, that was, and, yeah, so...
Yeah, we talked about it.
Yeah. And we talked about how it would be structured because people don't like, when they start making donations, they don't want to give their names out because then everybody's asking. So it was, it was, how are we going to structure the resolution to, to remain anonymous?
Can you work with Gerard on that?
I will.
All right, we appreciate that. If you need me to be involved, let me know. Thanks for bringing that up, Doug. So, anybody else have something for the agenda? So you will not be here for that one?
For next week, correct.
For Tuesday, but you will be here for the next council agenda.
I will not. I'll be gone.
For that, okay. Is there? Well, we have a couple second readings, which won't be nothing that, unless Dan has something. Dan can pick up whatever, you know, and then
Betsy.
Betsy's going to pick up the other pieces and Betsy's going to pick up the other pieces, and we'll go from there, sound okay?
Will this be your first meeting?
No, she's done it before.
Okay, well, then, would you please read item number 11 for us?
Convening to close session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 19.85/1/E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investment of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, and with Stats 19.85/1/C, compensation and performance evaluation debt of employees over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercise responsibility.
Okay, so we will, we need to vote, don't we?
I move we go into convening closed session pursuant to 1985-1E and 1985-1C.
Thank you.
A second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, and I guess call the roll, Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero, and we will, we will not be reconvening in here, we will just-
Correct.
Come out and adjourn, so, thank you for coming tonight, and hopefully you can get your windshield cleared off when you get outside, so.